The United States of America, whose republic withstands one nation under God, individual with liberty that does not fall.
Thank you very much. First order of business under announcements and presentations, I do need to announce that the board held an executive session. That was this evening. We discussed personnel, real estate acquisition, and matters involving attorney-client privilege. Next, under announcements and presentations, first on our agenda is a solar installation discussion in the I-1 district. I believe we have representative this evening, please come up. Good evening.
My name is Dean, Attorney Dean Reynosa from MPL Law Firm in York. I have here with me my client, representative of our client, Dimension Energy, Lawrence Shing, and he'll give a background at least for Dimension Energy, and then I'll, I'll get back into talking about the, what we're asking for, what we're looking at here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Hello, everyone. My name is Lawrence Shing. I'm an Associate Project Development Manager with Dimension Energy. Just a quick intro, we haven't made an application yet, but just a quick background for context on Dimension Energy, we are a national developer, owner and operator of small-scale solar projects. So typically, we develop projects that are on 10 to 20 acres in private land or on commercial warehouses. So we're kind of here to talk about the commercial warehouse side. Today, we have a couple of projects that we're contemplating and just kind of walk through the solar ordinance with you guys.
Excellent. So what we're here for, we have some properties, interesting properties in the I-1 district, and presently, I believe the township has I-2 district that permits solar farms. Solar farms being solar facilities that do not, that send energy back out to the grid rather than act as an accessory or support the actual principal use. We see that the I-2 district that's permitted in the I-2 district, and we were just wondering, I mean, we haven't filed a text amendment application, but I think that might be a route we're trying to consider. Just trying to figure out if there was a, if there's an outright opposition to that from the township, or if that was intentional to keep the I-1 and I-2 separate, they're all kind of clustered there together. There's only a few parcels, open parcels that I can see, looking at the, the tax assessment map in the I-1 district. As Lawrence indicated, these would be projects that would be on roofs of existing warehouses that are presently existing. There's no future warehouse needed to be added or any additional structure added, but it's existing warehouses. I know we, I, our firm has represented developers throughout the state of Pennsylvania. We go to rural parts of, parts of the state, and a lot of times when we try to present the ground-mounted, ground-mounted solar projects, you get a lot of opposition, and one of the, one of the common comebacks for all the, any opponents that are out there is always, you know, you should put these solar projects on top of parking lots or on top of warehouses, and that's what we're trying to do here, at least with respect to, to these two projects. That's what Dimension has, and and we just want to see if there's any questions or any, any concerns or rather than invest the money in that and go after an I-1, an amendment to the I-1 district, we want to at least test the temperature and figure out that, what, what it is here in the township. And with these net metered projects, they're a smaller project, they're under three megawatts. The net meter, they, they produce, generate the electricity, send it out back to the local grid as opposed to a larger 20-mo, 20-megawatt facility that would send it out further, further away. This is just like the solar panels that are on homes. It generates the electricity and sends it right out back to the local utility provider. So we're open to any questions. We just want to see if the township's willing to offer some comments on our suggestion of a text amendment.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, let's look to the board, comments or questions?
My question would be, why not look at some of the warehouses already in the general industrial? Why, why look at warehouses in the light industrial when that's not actually permitted?
It just appears that there's opportunity in both districts and these, these solar panels are not, typically the most opposition you get from solar projects are people don't want to see the solar panels with them being on top of warehouse, either being in the I-1 or the I-2 district, they're not going to be seen, so you, you wouldn't have that primary concern. We're, we're, these are opportunities that are there, and we want to add more electricity to the, to the network, to the, and these were opportunities we want to pursue, and they happen to be in the I-1 district. I can't answer as to whether or not any exist in the I-2 district. Lawrence, do you have anything to add, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, typically Dimension will work with a broker in between that present, you know, different properties to us, so these are the ones that we've been presented by a broker. They happen to be in the I-1 district, haven't received any specifically that are in I-2. And, you know, some, sometimes those warehouses might not want to work with us, or the utility might not have additional capacity to have additional generation sent in that area. So, you know, that's kind of why.
Typically, what we're seeing is the light industrial are closer to residences. So this particular location where you're looking at here is right next to a preserved farm, so that's a little bit of a concern for me.
I, I understand the concern again, and as I mentioned, when we present these to other rural areas, and we present them, presented them in R-1 districts, presented them in ag preservation districts that had solar, solar ordinances that permitted that, but a primary concern is the, obviously, the preservation of the farmland. People are upset, they don't want to see a gre, a gre, a solar system on on farmland. But here, we're not doing that. Here, the idea is to put the solar panels on top of a, an existing warehouse where no one will see them. So that's how.
Makes sense to me to have the solar on top of warehouses, but it would make sense to me to be in a general industrial area where they're already permitted, rather than adding a text amendment to put them in a light industrial area where it's not permitted in the first place. That, that's what would make more sense to me.
Okay, we appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Are these, just from the drawings, are they flat or they angled?
They're, they're angled, but like not much, like they won't stick out above the roof. Typically, there's 10 degrees, like flush to the roof.
Thank you.
The solar panels, how long are they usable?
Typically, the life of them are 30 years generally, if I'm not mistaken, 20, 20 to 30 years. And a lot of the town, a lot of the solar ordinances have what are called the decommissioning, everyone's always concerned about what happens to these solar panels at the end of life. A lot of townships have in their solar ordinances, and I don't know, I think yours may have that as well, I'm not 100% sure. But the decommissioning requirement for the developer or the operator of the system to then come and recycle and take and return, now, these are ground mounted, I'm talking about the ground mounted system, to return that land to, to whatever it was before that. But it's 20, 20 to 30 years, generally speaking.
You know, I'd rather see them on the rooftops instead of on the farmlands or anything like that, so.
Sure, that's, we understand that. And then we get, we get those questions or those comments all the time at, in, in the other locations.
Now, what you generate from the solar panels, is that sold back to the electric company?
Yeah, this would be PPL in this example.
Okay, and usually what's, I'm trying to think of, you know, what, maybe what these companies put out versus what you're going to send back to PP and L. Is, is there percentage, I guess, what I'm looking for?
This would be completely sent to PPL. So it's, it's not feeding the existing warehouse at all.
Right, this is a, it's a net meter project, it'll generate, all the electricity generated will be sent back out to PPL. As to the, are you asking how many homes this would?
No, 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 I, it'll probably just be for the warehouse, I guess.
Warehouse, it, it's not going to be supporting the warehouse. All this electricity generated by these panels will be sent back out to be sold on the, on the PPL.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my question would be, and we've seen this a lot where the warehouses are sold, is this tied into the, the owner at the time, or are you leasing like roof space where it transfers from owner to owner? How does that?
Yeah, we have, we have an existing lease with the, the landowners, so New York Life in this case. I think if they were to ever sell it, they would have to transfer the lease.
Okay, the other, the other issue would be then, if it would be to, to granted for the, the I-1, you don't exceed the overhang of the roof, it's all predicated to the square footage of the roof that's existing there, right?
Correct.
Right, yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Question for you on noise with the converters or inverters, is that a valid concern or something that you would address with the text amendment?
I mean, typically, the inverters, I don't have the specs in front of me, but this is in industrial zone, there's already existing industrial noises, there's, they're not going to be more than that.
Yeah, just going to your concern, a lot of solar ordinances do have requirements for sound, how much the inverters might generate.
Okay.
And we, and I don't, how, I don't know how we're, how this, you know, how the board wants to draft this text amendment, but, but obviously, we comply to what, whatever the board wishes and keep the noise, noise
Yeah.
relative in that district.
Okay, yeah, I think just to echo what was brought up earlier, we probably have some situations where it borders residential, that would be a concern that we could, you know, would want to see mitigated if possible, so.
Yeah, we, we've done noise analysis in the past, we'd be happy to provide that.
Okay. All right.
Locally, have you done anything like this before in, in other townships or boroughs or anything else that, that you can tell us that it's been successful?
Like rooftop projects?
Rooftops.
Yeah, we have a pretty big portfolio of rooftop projects in New Jersey, and we're starting to develop more here in Pennsylvania. I think a couple are in construction near Pittsburgh. But we have operating assets in New Jersey that are like very similar.
Anything locally?
Not in this immediate area for rooftops. We are, I think, developing near Allentown as well, so I guess not too far.
A lot of the rooftop ordinances are permitted uses, I, so I, I've been involved in a lot of permitting for ground-mounted solar. A lot up in Columbia County and to have some over in Adams County, New York County, so, but those are ground-mounted systems, and those have a lot of different concerns than these roof-mounted systems would have. But I know a lot of commercial buildings are moving to that, it's, it's, it's just space that can be utilized to generate electricity.
Okay, any other comments so far?
Carl, I, I just will let you know, I'm not in favor of a text amendment to add this solar use to I-1 to light industrial, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. Anything from staff?
Not at this time, I know Scott had some comments.
So when we drafted this ordinance, we do have noise requirements at the property line, and we also have decommissioning in it, so we thought about that one.
In the I-2 ordinance?
Correct.
Okay.
So everything that you guys brought up practically, other than obviously the zone that it's in, when we crafted it, we put it in.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, we would have no problem complying with the, with the noise requirements as in, in that ordinance as well as decommissioning.
Okay. All right. Board have a wish to move forward with looking at something like this? It seems, it's, go ahead. Yeah, it's up to the board, either we would do that now or when we would draft an ordinance. There's any preference?
Do it now.
Okay, yeah, we, let's, let's, let's do it now, we can take some input.
Hi, I was asked to unmute, but I couldn't hear what anyone was saying before. Am I supposed to be talking right now?
Yeah, Ricky, you're, you have the floor?
Okay, sorry, um, Ricky McLaren, 111 Stephen Drive. Quick question for the folks who are presenting here, can you just say a little bit more about what brought you to Silver Spring Township? In particular, I know you mentioned like York and Adams, but you don't have anything that's going on here. Were you, you know, was there a bid that went out about this? Are there particular entities that are looking for this type of thing in our area? What communications have you had with folks in our township about this already? Can you just speak a little bit to that, so we can understand where this is coming from, from a broader standpoint?
Yeah, sure. I kind of, like I mentioned earlier, Dimension works with brokers that present opportunities to us, so they have relationships with a lot of warehouses kind of all over the country, and there's a lot of these large commercial REITs that are looking to either do green energy or kind of add in additional revenue stream to their warehouses. So it's kind of a win-win for us and them, where, you know, we're developing the solar and they're kind of getting a couple of these additional positive benefits.
And it also adds energy back out to the local grid, so there's a positive.
Thank you for answering that. A question for the board, then, if I can follow up quickly. Is this, is the intention of this, or do you foresee this sort of thing impacting your tendency or likelihood of saying yes and approving certain warehouses and buildings of this nature because it would add this extra, you know, solar opportunity on top of it, or will you still be, you know, considering the full picture of what a warehouse could do to a community and potentially be extremely detrimental?
I'll be honest with you, at least from my perspective, this wouldn't have anything to play into it, it's mainly, I think, existing warehouses right now, and I don't really know where we can even add any more warehousing in the township zoning-wise. Scott, is there any tracks? We, I don't think we have any Ricky left that are available for warehouse.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, and, and, and just so I understand, this is only in reference to warehousing and not any other commercial buildings or parking lots, it's only warehousing?
It would be any use in I-1, right?
Right, we just asked to amend, we're asking to amend the, to add I-1, it just happens that our two projects happen to be warehouses, that's what we're focused on.
Yeah, okay, did you get that, Ricky?
I did, thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Scott, anybody else online? Okay, anybody here in person want to comment? Sam?
Sam Herbert, Foxwood. I'm electrical engineer myself. One of the concerns with the solar power is electromagnetic waves, okay? So people who work near the, there's research papers, okay? People who work near the transformer are a solar radiation, okay? That electromagnetic waves is exposed for a longer time, okay? So if they're exposed like five years, six years, it's not a problem. But somebody who's staying 20 years or maybe 10, 15 years, okay? There's a research paper, I didn't have it here before me, because I didn't know that today is a solar, but they have a proof that, that causes cancer, lung cancer, okay? So I agree with, you know, Super Professor Lara, you know, as, you know, you know, from Foxwood representative, you know, I do not agree with, you know, putting in a, you know, solar, you know, at least, you know, in any place, whether it's a, you know, residential or a warehouse, whatever it is, right? I do not, you know, I agree with the Super Professor Lara, thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
I can briefly respond to that, I mean, obviously, we don't want to do anything to impact the health, safety and welfare negatively for any of the citizens here in the community, and as I mentioned, I've been, we, we have presented other projects, and that's obviously a concern, that's a concern that individuals raised in some of these public comments. We've been presenting an expert that talks about it and talks about the, the electromagnetic ray that do not, that do not impact, they're not significant enough, it's just like any other electrical component. And these are all UL certified pieces of equipment, but, but we do have an expert that, that has, has debunked those, those theories.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a, I have a question for either one of you two gentlemen. All the hardware that goes in the, the, to transmitting it to the power grid, any of the mechanisms involved that he, that he's talking about, they're not really that accessible to, to the humans working on grade level, they're not going to be accessed in a close proximity, they'll, they'll be away from individuals, correct?
The equipment?
Yeah.
The solar panels are going to be on the, on the roof?
No, but.
The inverters?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have some ground equipment, like inverter, transformer pad, typical.
Defense scenario, right?
They'll be enclosed, yeah.
So there's not going to be people in that close proximity to them?
They shouldn't.
Okay.
Okay, any other comment input on this? Yep. Online, good. Mr. Lake?
We all know that cell phones cause brain cancer and Roundup absolutely causes leukemia. People should be suing for billions of dollars. We all know that the children at the high school are dying from the solar array that's in back of the high school. Let's get real. Let's get some hard science in this. Farms are producing electricity through solar, improving crop production due to the shading in certain crops, and providing better health for livestock due to shading in other instances. This should be an integral part of an agricultural operation when appropriate. We allow this on homes. The numbers that I looked at didn't work unless I could totally sever from the grid. But, you know, let's stop coming up with the space waves coming into the brain and all this conjecture. If people have hard science, they'd like to present to the township for consideration in this as you develop the verbiage for if necessary, I don't even think it's necessary to produce a text amendment, but if you feel it's necessary, let's base it on hard science and not UFOs and and theories like some of those that are coming out of our health secretary at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Lake. Scott, anybody else online? Okay. I, I'm open to considering this further. Personally, I look to the board maybe for if anybody else or where everyone stands, what, what we want to do next.
Yeah, I'll say that, you know, we, we value the, the open space in the ag ground, if we don't put them on roofs, all we're doing is opening the door for somebody to come in and say there's an open tract to ground, I think it's easier for them to probably mount them on roofs than it is, I would rather see 100 times over the roofs being used than open space or ag ground that's disappearing every day. So I'd, I'd entertain it for sure.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Harry?
Yeah, I would go along with, what Dave said, I would probably entertain it, I wouldn't, wouldn't want it on agriculture, I would probably look for like warehouses, homes or something like that.
Okay, Nancy, any preference?
I, I'm, I'm willing to take a look at it.
Okay, so consensus, go ahead.
If I could just speak, I mean, once you've let this text amendment into the light industrial, then some future board could rezone ag land and other land to light industrial, and this could be allowed on what ground that is currently ag land. I have a problem adding this as a text amendment to the I-2, the I-1 district.
A fut, a future board could turn around and change the, our ordinance, that it could be a text amendment in the future, we, we can't control that.
No, it's just the point you had said, that there aren't many I-1 parcels right at the moment, I'm saying that some future board could rezone, and we could end up with a lot more I-1 parcels.
What I said was for future warehousing, there's no open tracks left after the property there on Mulberry Drive or off of Mulberry Drive. So there is tons of roof space that can be utilized in the I-1 and I-2, and I would rather open arms welcome that than to force people to come in and ask us for a rezone, which we have no obligation to do, but this gives open space for people to put these structures up on the roof, I'm.
I, I would, I would prefer to have them on roofs if we're going to have them, but I would prefer that it be in the general industrial where solar is already allowed. But that's, that's just my opinion.
Okay, so, yeah, more, more debate to come, I think we have a majority at least would like to move forward and take a look at this, so we'll have, we'll ask staff and Solicitor Schultz to do that in consultation with the applicant potentially.
I think typically in a case like this, the applicant would apply for a text amendment.
Okay.
I think that they were just trying to feel, feel it out tonight, probably, is it worth proceeding with that?
The money to, we already have the, I mean, you have an application for a text amendment on.
Right, okay.
Meet with you and talk about the project before investing all that money to pursue. We appreciate your time and ability to get us on the agenda this week.
Likewise, thank you for coming in, gentlemen, appreciate it. All right, we'll invite Mr. Palmer up for a few township updates.
I'll be brief, I know we got a pretty full agenda. As we always do, just a quick update here for the March year-to-date. There's our performance for first three months of the year, we're at 25% of the year. There's our revenue and expense line, and then some of the other key indicators for our financial performance. We obviously have nine more months to go, but right now, things are doing well, the staff is continuing to do a great job on the expense side. I just want to publicly thank them again for, for doing a, a great job for their, their oversight on the expenses. Jump to the next one. Not going to go through all these, I just wanted everybody to see, we've got about 22, what I would say, ongoing projects. So we're very busy. There's many more projects that are not on here, but I just wanted the board, instead of the other way, I do it, just a sense of how many things are happening and we're juggling. This obviously doesn't include all the land development plans or any other, any other initiatives that are happening in the community development department, so tons happening, lots of good things going on. One thing I want to just again publicly thank, we're, we just finished phase one of migrating the financial software system into the cloud, so that went fairly well, we've got some follow-ups in May. So we're very excited about where that's going and was a big initiative we have, so this was, again, was just a quick snapshot, we can jump on the next one. We, we shared this last time, these are the, these are the four major grants that the township is, is vying for. It's been shared by us, by people from Harrisburg, it's going to get tougher and tougher to get more grant money. The reality is, is even some of the grants that you can get, the funds or the amounts of money is available, depending on which one they are, may not be as large. So these are the, these are the four that we are, we are vying after. Thanks, Scott. Everybody sees Costco, lots of, lots of rock, I just will say, everybody sees it every day, lots of rock. We actually had Costco in today, or last week, or excuse me, this week, to talk a little bit about some of the HVAC and so forth. They're telling us fall of 2025. That's, that's what they're saying, so they're working very diligently to get that up by fall of 2025. Okay. I want to share here is a couple of businesses that opened, I don't know if you saw the Tide Place there over in Silver Spring Plaza. Scott, Nancy, some of you were at the ribbon cutting, just a, a nice business that we have in the township. Appreciate everybody that went to it, I just wanted to show you some of those, we have a couple other pictures. Dollar General is where the old Rite Aid was up on 114 in Wurtzville. They, they want to open yesterday, I'll just say that they're going to open soon, but Dollar General is going to be coming, is going to be coming. That's the old Rite Aid at 114 in Wurtzville, they're retrofitting that, okay? I don't know if everybody knew that J Crew is coming. So they're coming in next to the LL Bean in that plaza there, so they're also saying they want to open very, very soon, so I just want to share that. And a couple of events coming up, so a couple I want to mention. First and foremost, May 7th, we have an open house here from 3 to 6, we do it annually. The staff is here, anybody, please come, bring anybody you want, each department has a table, any questions? We've got our trucks, our police department for tours, please come to the township for that day. I can't send pictures or put a picture up, but I just want to share with you the Easter egg hunt, just a little bit of a factoid here. There was tons of kids, I'd say we probably had about 500 people at Stony Ridge Park, and in five minutes, 7,000 eggs were collected. Any, was anybody there by chance? Thank you. It, it's, I have a witness, thank you. 7,000 eggs in five minutes are gone, it's an awesome event in the community. People come not just from Silver Spring, but from the whole community. We have it set up by age groups, so we don't have like the teenagers beating up the eighth grader or eight-year-olds, but it's really a great time. People are really appreciative. People are really appreciative of this community event. I would highly recommend for you to come just to watch this five minute bonanza. It's really something to watch. So open house, and then we've got the Memorial Day ceremony, and then we have Chill at the Mill coming up here in June. So it's just a quick recap. I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you to staff. We're off to a really great start this year, so thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to public comment. Please come up to the mic if there is any. Mr. Duncan, I see you starting here first.
Yes, sir. Last month, you were going to give me a call. I'm sorry, Randy Duncan, Green Ridge Road. I didn't receive one, so I don't know if that occurred.
It didn't. It's on me. I still owe you that.
All right, just want to clear that up. I was hoping to have five E removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll pull it, we'll pull it and talk about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
You're saying G?
No, E. Okay, any other public comment? Sir?
Richard Rosen, hi, everyone. Good evening. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak. First, I'd like to remind everybody here and online that next Wednesday, April thirtieth, the League of Women Voters is hosting a meet the candidates night at the Simpson Ferry Library on Walnut. And there are six candidates that are running for the two seats that are available on the board. And then on May seventh, the Business Advisory Committee will sponsor a debate debate at the New Kingston Fire Hall. These are great opportunities for residents to engage directly with the six candidates running for the two open board of supervisor positions. I'm really excited about it, and I know a lot of residents are as well. And next, I was gone on vacation for the last two meetings, and while reviewing recent meeting minutes, I noted that Mr. Mackimer raised concerns about the volume of right to know RTK requests being submitted to the township. Well, first, it's important for everybody to be schooled that under Pennsylvania law, an agency cannot limit the number of records a citizen may request. Now that said, the law does encourage requesters to exercise good judgment and not use the process to harass or overwhelm an agency, and we'll let, I hope that I, along with other people, are not harassing you or overwhelming you in any way. And I thank her directly for all her help. But let's be honest, guys. If the residents felt that the township and board were being more transparent, there would be far less need for RTK requests in the first place. In other words, increased transparency would naturally reduce this burden. So lastly, I'd like to revisit, please, the sixty five hundred dollar monthly expenditure to the public relations firm of Long and Night Quest. We brought this up repeatedly. To date, residents have not been made aware of any meaningful accomplishments that justify such a significant taxpayer funded expense in times when fiscal responsibility is more important than ever. I think it's fair to ask, what measurable value is this firm providing to the residents of Silver Spring Township? Thanks again for your time and seriously for your service to the community.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Boucher?
Clarence Boucher, fifteen works circle in New Kingston. I want to start off with kudos for the Board of Supervisors. Last meeting, you looked at the Cost Road Storage Depot slash drop lot. And you actually put in a woodland buffer between the residents to the north and the the drop lot. Of course, we should have had a lot more distance in there, but you you put in what you could. I thought that was a very good use of the woodland buffer condition that we've talked about in the past and sort of is proves the concept that we can have tools in a toolbox, pull it out, and use it even in a permitted use like this was. So again, kudos to the the board for that. At the same time, there's some disappointment as well with the Cost Road. I thought that the supervisors did a really good job analyzing that particular application. You talked about entry control points. You talked about hours of operation, talking to the neighbors, reefer trucks, and then nothing. There was no discussion with the developer as far as whether he put those in for conditions. There was no vote at the end, even though it looked like there was a consensus among the board members. Even when the developer said he'd be willing to put in fencing, you still didn't follow up with a condition. And as we know, if it's not in writing, it's much less enforceable. So I'm asking the board that when you do have these good discussions, when you do seem to come to consensus, that you follow through. And you work with the developer to put in conditions if it is a conditional use or ask them to consider things if it's a permitted use. But either way, take advantage of that good discussions that you guys had and make it come to fruition. And I echo what Rich says. I really do appreciate your service. I know it's not easy. You're constantly getting harassed by the public about things that you didn't do right. But I do think that there are things that can be improved, and I hope that this is one that you take on through consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Clarence.
Hey, Clarence, in our, I wanted to clarify in our consent agenda here, if you look at the minutes, it says that Supervisor Lanker requested refrigerated trailers be stored on the side away from the mobile home park due to compressor.
And that was my point. You actually discussed it. But it, what, did it come up for a vote as a condition?
Did we receive that plan yet, Scott? Do you know? That hasn't been.
Yeah, my understanding when we gave those conditions that that was, they they were agreeable to.
Yeah, I was expecting notes on the plan. We can, we'll verify that.
That was my.
Well, I mean, you you voted on the woodland buffer. And that was clearly something that the the board wanted, and like I said, I appreciate you doing that. But there were no other votes on any other items. Maybe it's going to get into the notes, maybe it isn't. But I do know if you don't vote, that we got to have this discussion now, maybe, maybe not. If you did vote, it would, would be on there, and that's my point.
Clarence, I can't, I can't promise that the legal end or the votes, but I can say when the plan gets resubmitted, I'll make sure to check for all those items. And I understand maybe I do or don't have the legal authority, but I'll make sure to to look for them and push if they're not there.
Right, and that was my point, that it's less enforceable if it isn't in writing.
Yeah.
And that's, that's all I'm asking for. If if you guys thought it was a good idea, and obviously you did, because it had been discussed and seemed like there was a consensus, why not follow through? That's all I'm asking for is to follow through.
Yeah, my understanding, he was taking notes that we gave him, I think multiple supervisors gave him bullet points, and he seemed, he said he was agreeable.
Well, he seemed agreeable to fencing. I'm not, I'm almost sure he wasn't agreeable to the UCP, for instance. But again, we don't know because we didn't come up for a vote. It wasn't put down in writing anywhere, and that's, that's really my point. Not that you didn't have a good discussion. I thought you did. It's that you didn't follow through.
Thanks, Clarence. Appreciate it. Okay, other public comment, sir?
Uh, s- sorry. Okay, Sam Herbert, Foxwood. I want to echo township managers, you know, about the Easter egg hunt. Kudos. The reason I say is I was there one hour before. You know, township manager was, you know, working very hard, you know, setting up the, you know, things. It's windy and chilly, but still, you know, he worked hard. Not only him, Tyler Fairchild, the park and rec manager, he was putting the cones, you know, he's doing an awesome job. So I seen Missy, lot of every employees of the township were there. I want really appreciate their hard work and and what they do, you know, every day. So thank you for that. Now I have a request. Under a five new business, you have a Silver Spring Fire Company, you know, renewal of agreement. I want to tell you this. I myself is a firefighter, okay? I'm a member of Silver Spring Fire Company as well, okay? So we put our life before the, you know, fire. We don't worry about, you know, living, you know, dying for the cause of saving people, okay? Every Tuesday, we go there, go there and do drills, okay? So we go, you know, two, three floors, take the, you know, hose and carry it and do the drills. Yesterday, you know, we are doing, you know, with the tools. So we work hard. So I would really appreciate, okay, if we can, you know, consider, you know, approving, you know, that that agreement. So really, you know, I, this is my personal opinion. I'm not representing the fire company, but as a firefighter and member of the fire company, you know, I'm humbly requesting that, you know, you consider, you know, approving that. Thank you. Thank you, manager. You did awesome job.
Staff did a fantastic job. Missy Steimer, Hope Pavlidich, and Tyler Fairchild, they they did really an outstanding job for the Easter egg hunt.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Herbert, any other comment? Okay, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. Any other comment this evening? Okay, hearing none?
Hi. Hello?
Ricky, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry. It's the delay. Um, hi, everyone. Ricky McLaren, one 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 Stephen Drive. Um, so I, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there is a a piece of property on Four Keener Drive, now owned by EDO Trucking, that is illegally using the lot as a drop lot. And it's not, it's in violation of our ordinances, and it's not a permitted use. My understanding is that the township has made contact with them and had some ongoing back and forth with them to try to figure it out. But my question for the Board of Supervisors is, given this is an illegal use, it is not permitted in the zoning, and that's been made cleared by the township. Why have we, why has the township not submitted a stop order to this this company to have them cease operations while everything's getting figured out? Just to be clear, it is very close to our residential homes. There is no buffer. It's operating twenty four seven. It's operating outside of our noise ordinances. The the trucks are idling all the time. They are dropping trailers. It is waking up children and families, you know, five thirty AM, ten PM, ten thirty PM at night. It's even causing some of the houses that, you know, butt up to it to shake when the trucks turn on and off. So it is, it's really, really a, you know, a big, you know, health issue at this point, and I I just don't understand why a cease order or a stop order wasn't submitted and and if the Board of Supervisors could take immediate action to make that happen. Any, anyway, I hope this comes through. Okay, I'm I'm genuinely, you know, curious and and asking for help at this point.
Yeah, we got you, Ricky. Let me have Solicitor Schultz give an update on that.
To the extent that I I can comment on it, their, the township is aggressively enforcing that that issue. The notice of violation has been, has been sent out to the property owner. They've now retained counsel. If if their legal counsel hasn't yet received the communication from my my office, they they soon, soon will, that the the board will not, will not permit this this use to continue. It doesn't, it doesn't conform to the to the zoning ordinance at at all. They were provided an opinion previously on on this subject. Slightly different issue that they they raised, but close enough, and and so our position is is that there there won't be any any leeway on on this issue.
Okay, thank you, Solicitor Schultz. Okay, Ricky, were you able to hear that? Okay? Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute, but Scott just like, yes, I did hear it. I I guess my just follow up question for clarification is, well, first of all, thank you for taking action and putting in the notice of violation, but is there, is there any legal reason why it's a notice of violation versus a stop order?
Because they'll, they'll have, they'll have an opportunity to to appeal the the opinion of and decision of the zoning enforcement. That my, my initial conversation, I can say, with their attorney was that they would would conform to the zoning or his advice would be that they would conform to the to the zoning ordinance. Once we have these discussions, these discussions only began to occur this this week with my office. So we haven't taken that additional step. We have other options that we've discussed with staff that that we can, we can move forward with, but because it's a, it's a pending pending action, I'm not going to comment too much more on what what the strategy is going to be, but it's going to be clearly clearly communicated to to the council for the for the owner of the property.
Okay, thank you. I I my my request for the Board of Supervisors, because I understand we don't want to talk much more about this right now, but could the Board of Supervisors please take a close look at this in collaboration with Sean and the township to look at all of your options and please highly consider a more aggressive approach, because this is affecting the day to day of our lives here in a pretty significant way, and you know, if right now a less aggressive approach is being taken out of respect for EDO Trucking, I I would ask the Board of Supervisors to consider pushing for a more aggressive one for the sake of, you know, the families that are right here.
Okay, will do, Ricky. We understood. We hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else online, Scott? Okay, we'll move on then to consent agenda. Look for any comments or questions on consent agenda, and then a motion excluding five E. We'll discuss that separately.
I, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I know we'll be doing consideration on the motion detection system. This is a little bit off. It's not the same thing as that, but when I read through this, I thought it was a couple of weeks ago, I was traveling on Texaco Road. And Ray, I was looking for Tyler. This is directed towards Tyler.
He he's online.
Oh, okay. Going past the tank farm, there were about four or five PW workers there, Public Works workers and a couple of trucks parked. I'm not sure what they were doing, but we were traveling west. And the road was kind of blocked, and there was somebody from Public Works gave a hand signal to to go ahead because there were no other vehicles coming, which is fine. Because we were getting like the sun and stuff, it was hard to see his hand. And my suggestion is for safety wise that maybe some, whenever they're doing like traffic control, that they either use some type of either fluorescent glove, a sign, or a white glove. I know from experience, when I was with Capitol Police, I used to use a white glove in the summertime, fluorescent glove in the wintertime, directing traffic. And safety wise, I would hate to see someone get hurt. So maybe we can offer them some type of safety equipment whenever they're out there directing traffic so that if it's oncoming traffic or whatever, that that they can be safe. I don't want anyone to get hurt. I don't want any of the drivers to get hurt of the vehicles and stuff, and and so could you please pass that on?
Was there a work zone? Dave, I'm not sure what he was doing in Texaco. I'll let Tyler respond.
Yeah, we weren't doing any work on Texaco. I know we were out there for a brief stint for a sign repair. But I will follow up with the guys on in the crew on that that matter, but I do know within the last week, we were out there for a sign repair, but no, no work zone was set up.
Tyler, this was at the entry control point to the where they go in to fill the tankers and stuff. They were parked alongside the road. So they were pretty much on the on the lane going west. And that's whenever the gentleman.
So I I do know there's.
There's a contractor working in the area, Tyler.
Yep, the pipeline's doing work. They had communicated with us weeks ago they were doing work, but. Yep, the pipeline's doing work. They had communicated with us weeks ago, they were doing work, but we, as the Public Works has not had any work there on Texaco. But I, I can definitely follow up with that, Harry.
Yeah, this was our, our crews.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments on consent?
I will make a comment, Cheryl. Let Suba know, there's a little bit extra notations in, uh, expenses. It kind of helped a lot. I don't know if that's a new.
It's, yeah, it's part.
System.
It, it is. You have some, a little bit more capability for descriptions. And I think you'd, someone had asked about a personnel who happened to have the same last name. Uh, we identified that name, uh, differently so that you understood, uh, everybody's clear on that.
Some of the invoices that I probably would have had questions. There was a lot longer. I, I appreciate that because it makes it easier. So just wanted to thank whoever came up with that.
Suba, yep.
Thanks, Dave. Any other comments? Okay, I'll look for a motion excluding 5E on consent.
Motion to approve.
Nancy move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Harry second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. 5E, Chief or Ray, maybe a quick, quick briefing on that?
Yeah.
Good evening. Um, 5E cons, uh, is in consideration of, I came to the board. We had, um, K9 Raph is our newer of our two Canines. He's been on the street for a year and a half. He's two and a half years old. Uh, his handler had come to me with a personal issue that was preventing him from continuing to be a canine handler. And, uh, we looked to internal options. We were unable to find any that were, that were doable. And, uh, we, I reached out to surrounding, uh, departments. West Shore Area Regional was interested in looking to add a canine to their program. Uh, so we were able to come to an agreement that they would take Raph, which keeps him local. So if we would ever need use of Raph, as long as he's working that day or the handler's available, he would be available to continue to give us some service. Uh, the vehicle that was sold to him was a 2016 Ford that's outfitted for the canine. And it had 92,000 miles on, so it was definitely near the tail end of its life.
And then, yeah, one other comment, we added a right of first refusal as well in that agreement, just in the event that in a year, it's not working out for them. Maybe we're in a position then to, to have a handler that we would have at least, you know, first opportunity to get, to bring Raph back. So it seemed like a pretty fair agreement in that sense, at least from my perspective. So any comment or question from the board or Randy, any follow-up on that? You had requested that?
It was my under, I, I, I understand that the, the animal was purchased through donations. What happens to the money retrieved from this regarding the donations and, uh, you know, I'm not saying that donations wouldn't be, you know, allocated elsewhere, but, uh, you know, when, when this situation occurs, uh, you know, a year and a half down the line, all of a sudden we're, we're reallocating this, uh, this money. So.
Question. That would go, go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, the, the money received, and that's kind of why it was split into two, uh, for the canine has been placed back into the canine fund. And then the amounts that were received for the vehicle will go back to the township's other accounts that Cheryl could, yeah, general fund or some general fund, because the vehicle was initially purchased by the township as a patrol vehicle. So yes. And I did reach out, um, for those that were here. Two years ago, John Murphy from Alpha presented and, and made a very generous donation that led directly to us getting Raph. I gave him a direct call and, and explained the situation to him so that he would know, just because of his generosity or his companies. He understood. They're more than eager to help again, but yes, the money goes right back in. And if down the road, we're in that position, at least it's there for us.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure it's reallocated to the, to the, uh, canine fund.
Yeah, fair point. Thanks, Randy. Yeah, look for a motion then on 5E.
I'll make a motion. We approve, uh, consent, tend to item standalone, item 5E.
Dave moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. We'll move on to public hearing. This is zoning ordinance 2025-03. And I'll start by turning the meeting over to Solicitor Schultz to open the hearing.
Now, I'll note that the ordinance was, was duly advertised. And what I'll do is I'll, I'll give a brief overview of the revision. And then this is a, a hearing for public comment. Um, so this is an amendment, uh, that would, uh, change warehousing and wholesale trade establishment, um, which is a, a use permitted by right in the I2, um, general industrial, um, from a permitted use by right to a conditional use. Uh, along with that, um, there are conditions that already apply to it as a permitted use, um, that would be moved over into Article, uh, Article 4, which is the 400 section of, of the, uh, zoning ordinance. And effectively copy those, those conditions that are already required for the use as a permitted use by right. Um, and then, uh, with one revision, a couple of revisions, one, one for clarity's sake. Um, the other is, is really the, the only substantive revision to that. Uh, those conditions is, uh, for the traffic study, the, the condition had previously uh, simply required a traffic study, uh, by a professional traffic engineer, according to the, the requirements of the subdivision land development ordinance. It adds that, uh, the traffic study is to include an analysis of the most intensive Institute of Transportation Engineers Land Use Code that is possible under the application. Um, and that the, uh, applicant may propose that that use be limited to a lesser intensity. They would have to restrict themselves, um, to that. Other than that, there's, the conditions are effectively the same as, as they were under the, the use permitted by right. Um, so this would apply to all, uh, uh, any new warehouse in the, in the I2, uh, zone where, which is the only zone that warehouses are permitted. So with that, um, we'll open the floor up to any public comment. Um, if somebody wants, if there's any to be made at the podium. Go ahead, Mr. Rosen, if you want to head to the podium. Uh, and Scott, you'll let me know if you have a hand up online. You do. Okay.
Good evening again. Richard Rosen, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. So on the surface, ordinance 2025-03 sounds like a meaningful step forward. But in reality, its impact is extremely limited because it applies only to future plans. And as Dave says, there are no sizable undeveloped I2 parcels left in the township that could realistically host a new warehouse. So what this ordinance does in effect is create legal non-conformities for existing warehouses. And I've done my research on this, these non-conformities. And under Pennsylvania municipality municipalities planico, the MPC, non-conforming uses, one, may continue indefinitely. Two, may be expanded by up to 50% without rezoning and are protected from any new or stricter zoning regulations. So in short, the MPC overrides this ordinance. So while it may seem like it gives the township more control, it actually grants more leverage to existing warehouse owners, not less. So converting warehouse from a buy right to a conditional use doesn't stop what's already been approved or built. So it does not stop what's already been approved or built. And it mostly creates a legal shield for developers that were already greenlit. So the real solution was to address zoning decisions before approvals were granted. I mean, let's face it. Not after the fact, when state law locks in those rights. So to put it plainly, this ordinance is too little, too late. So here's the key, key question I ask us to answer tonight. How many undeveloped I2 parcels are left in Silver Spring Township? Zero, none. So because unless there's a clear answer, which would be a significant number of parcels affected, this ordinance amounts truly to political optics, not meaningful land use reform. And if there's any questions, thank you. I've done my research on this and I know this information is accurate.
I'll actually follow up maybe with a question and a clarification, um, comment. There is, there is, there is arguably one still. Um, but secondly, we have redevelopment, we have infill. Those things would still come into play. I, I agree. There's maybe not other than that one at the moment.
Well, the Trindles Springs is moot because they've already have the plan submitted. So there, if they go through and if it wins and they go through, that is not going to fall under these conditions.
If they lose. Chairman Mock, if I, if I could, because it's subject to litigation, I'll jump in on, on that issue. Um, that's not, not an accurate statement. Um, the plan was denied, um, in that case. Um, so these new regulations, um, should the court uphold that denial, would apply to a, a subsequent application.
They'd have to resubmit.
They would have to apply a new, um, so they'd apply under the, under the new.
Right, but that only if it were to be denied. So we don't know. That's all conjecture at this point, but only if they submit the new plan. Because currently, the current plan is, has fallen under all the regulations. We don't know what's going to happen under those.
Right, and on their court's decision in the end. The, the other, the other issue I, I'd address is, I'm not sure if, maybe I mistook what was, was said, but it seemed to be suggested that creating a non-conforming use would allow it to, to expand further than it might otherwise be able to expand. If a warehouse is in, in the I2 right now, um, was approved, uh, and it were to continue, the zoning district were to continue as, for that use as a use permitted by right, they could expand beyond 50%, right? They could expand infinitely, um, you know, up to, up to the, 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 the regulations that are, that are currently, um, in, in place, um, as far as setbacks and impervious coverage and, and so forth. Um, so couple of issues on that. One, it, this, this does not create an opportunity for expand. If anything, it limits the opportunity to expand. We're actually involved in other litigation that's in Commonwealth Court, um, on 180 cost on, on that issue, um, to limit that expansion. Two, this, this is not a, a, it's not a non-conforming use. The warehousing use is already permitted in, in the I2. Um, so that it, the non-conformity issue wouldn't, wouldn't really affect us, except it puts a cap on, on any expansion. Um, to the extent that, that it's a different, were, were to be a different use, which in this case it would not be a different use. It's the same, same use, just different conditions applying to it.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Sean, I also have a question. If it's redeveloped, um, depending on how they go about that, technically, as long as they leave part of the building there, that kind of leaves it outside this, correct?
If they, if the structure remains and they're doing some sort of expansion to the property or adding another use on the property, right?
Yeah, the, yeah, the, this wouldn't be a blanket. It would be for people that would do a total redevelop where they would disassemble, tear down.
Right, if they demo, demo and rebuild, they'd have to come in under a new plan. You have the, at least the one lot, obviously that's not developed yet, that's under litigation. Um, I, I don't know what the I2 looks like in total, but you can imagine, um, maybe there are lots that, that are in the I2 that are too small for warehouses, but they're adjoining each other. And you could see a consolidation, um, of, of lots and, and so a new warehouse because of that. So there, there may be those opportunities. I, I didn't, I didn't look at the map for that purpose.
Okay, Mr. Boucher?
Clarence Boucher, 15 Warwick Circle in, uh, New Kingston. Um, you've heard me say this several times, but it needs to be said again. Uh, every time I hear that we have no more land to develop on, um, I have to say that's just not true. And the, the solicitor has already mentioned a, a couple, uh, examples. Uh, but really what it comes down to is it depends on the composition of the board. And we already have two board members up for election. We don't know what the composition is going to be like in, uh, in a year from now. Uh, they can take land and from agriculture and put it into, uh, industrial. And we can have lots more of these coming up. I think that we need to address the root of the problem. And root of the problem is twofold. First off, this township has a stated policy of being reactive in the zoning ordinance. We wait for something to go wrong and then we react to it. And we saw that, for instance, with the plant center where we had to go through and uh, change the definition of a plant center. So we didn't get any more warehouses in there. We saw it again with the storage lot where we had to change the definition. So we didn't get drop lots put in there. And now we've got a third example with warehouses. And we learned our lesson from the Trindles Springs Trade Center that we need to have more control over these mega warehouses that are coming in. And developers are slippery. They're going to find a way, no matter what, to get a warehouse into a zone. And we need to be able to protect that as much as we can by making these warehousing conditional. And if your policy is going to be reactive, we need to do that. Now, Penn Future in their, um, model warehouse zoning ordinance has actually taken warehouses and put them into different levels. So the bigger the warehouse, the more impact it's going to have on the community and the more setbacks, the more conditions they recommend. We are not that sophisticated in our zoning ordinance. And in order to make up for that, we need to do it manually. And we do it manually by making this conditional. So you, the supervisors, can look at each individual plan, figure out what impact it's going to have on the community and then be able to address it that way. We need to have warehousing as conditional. And, uh, we need to do this in a forward-looking way. I understand the non-conformity part of this, but that's looking in the rear, rearview mirror. We need to be able to look ahead and say, more of these are coming. They're going to try to get it in here. And we need to be able to prevent that in some way or another. So I highly, highly recommend that you approve this particular amendment in order to make warehousing conditional. Thank you.
Clarence, I will, let me say one thing. You brought up about, you know, there could be a future board that does a rezone. The same thing could happen with this. I, I don't want you to get the false, you know, being a fallacy that, that this would lock it in forever. They could do the same.
I understand that, but it's, it's a stumbling block.
Oh, no, no, I agree.
One more thing that they have to go through, that the, you know, community and the public can come together and say, no, we don't want you to do this. So it's, it's a, it's a tripwire is what it is.
No, I agree. I just want people.
No, I, I understand.
I want people to know if they, if, if a future board decides to change zoning, a future board could, could ultimately.
They, they certainly can. We just make it more difficult for them by passing this and it's a tripwire so the community can react.
Yeah, I just want that stated because it could happen 10 years, 15, 20 years.
We're in agreement on that.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Clarence.
Okay.
But thanks for your comments.
It's Greenberg.
Victoria Greenberg, Casbrook Drive. I agree that this needs to be changed to conditional use. What I'd like to mention is I'd like to see some of the details. Everything is in details. A broad scope of conditional use can easily be changed. Decimal levels, noise levels, the effect that we'll have experts that somebody needs to show us. Those are the kind of details similar to what the county sent in a recommendation letter. Some of the details were down to a very specific item. I know you've all read it, but for anybody who has not read it, lighting, determiner threshold and lemon light, limit lighting at the property. Require a lighting plan to verify compliance. A detail. Somebody may walk away and say, I don't want to provide you a detail because it's too much trouble. It's us. It's the township. This is what we're requiring of somebody to make it work for the residents, for the township, everybody. And we have to be very clear that we have written our ordinances and our zoning laws not for developers, not for outsiders, but for our township and our residents and the people who are here, even the commercial, other commercial businesses here. One commercial business sees something and says, wait a minute, that wasn't the, you know, it's, these are our rules and this is what we go by. And this is what we go by. Like I said, I agree, needs to be changed to conditional, but the, the details, small, that they may seem, may be very important somewhere down the road, and we don't have to argue about it again. Those are the, what we have. Somebody may come in and say, well, I'd like to change it. Okay, but we now have it, that this is what we're interested in. This is what our township says. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, come on up.
Hello there. I'm Atreya Sinhiri. I'm a resident of Eight Warm Sunday Way, been here for 17 years. I would like to offer a few comments on the audience regarding the proposed revision to the warehouse use within the general industrial zone. First, I like the intent behind shifting warehouse and wholesale trade established, from permitting use to conditional use. The change does introduce a necessary layer of oversight. As our township is growing fast, this oversight is critical for maintaining balance between economic development and the quality of life. We, I urge you, I think you all have been doing a great job. When we talk about these articles three and four, something that we want to look into, traffic and infrastructure. We got to have developers to submit a detailed, like the madam just mentioned, detailed traffic studies, impact studies. Contribute to our improvements in the township. Environmental responsibilities. I have seen change over the last 17 years. How do we limit on truck idling and incentives towards energy efficient construction? How do I protect my neighborhood? Strengthening the setback screening and noise mitigation requirements. And finally, I would like to have a clarity and enforceability, I think somebody talked about, follow through. How do we use, if you have this conditional use, it should not be vague or subjective. So finally, I thank you for the time for us to speak. I would recommend that we access the potential economic impact of this change, both in terms of tax revenue and the type of businesses we want to attract to our township. Again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Mr. Duncan? Online, okay.
Thank you, Randy. Randy Duncan, Green Ridge Road. A little bit of history. The comments made regarding boards changing zoning. If you go back to Bud Albert Gaskins of the early 90s, you can still find this articles in the internet. He was on the Planning Commission and had been very livid about how his comprehensive plan in the past was modified and opened the door for development. We subsequently hired consultants who came in and said, we should have done what he had said back in the day, having parallel access roads rather than having, having direct access to the Carlisle Pike. And we're suffering, not, you know, on a, on a fiscal level as well because of that right now. I moved to this community in 2007, and I moved specifically to a real residential estate zoning category with a five acre minimum. The subsequent year, it was changed to a three acre minimum. During that, that time, I had no idea. I didn't participate. I encourage people to do, as you know, on a regular basis because of my experience in, in not participating and paying attention. And when we were debating the comprehensive plan that was adopted, I had, and Solicitor Schultz may come to you on this for comment later. The, we, we talked about the fact of taking that back to a five acre minimum in that category. And it was conveyed to me that it was not possible to revert back to, because we had already gone that route and it was already there. I see a similar situation occurring here. If I was a property owner and this appears to be geared towards one specific property, I would want to make sure that this board had done its due diligence and had an appraisal of what this property is valued worth before and what it would be worth afterwards with these changes to this. And, you know, if there was any change in that value, you know, me personally, I'd be looking at any significant changes of grounds for an additional lawsuit. So, you know, those, those two points, taken, the potential that there's another lawsuit that's going to occur, and also whether or not this line of thought that I, was conveyed to me about reverting back to lesser uses once they have increased. And that has occurred in other areas around this community. And I go back to my time at Susquehanna Township when John Vartan was granted an exception. So. But Solicitor Schultz, any thoughts that you could help me with on that? Does this, does that apply to this situation as we discussed, you know, regarding that three acre and five acre?
Randy, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm following what exactly you're getting at. The, the change from, from a permitted use to a conditional use, is that somehow illegal? Is that?
Well, we were, we were not allowed to go back to a five acre minimum in, in the residential estate zoning, because we had progressed down that path and, and had lesser sized lots. That was, that was the understanding that I had when we had discussions regarding the residential estate remaining a three acre minimum.
Right, I, I don't recall that discussion. I may not have been part of that. But in this particular case, since it's relevant to this hearing, the change to conditional use is, is proper permissible. There's, there's no limitation on that.
But if it changes the, the value of that, that, those particular parcels?
There's clear case law on that. Mr. Duncan, the, the, the change in value that may be affected by zoning regulation is not a factor in the constitutionality of that change.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Okay, online, Scott? Mr. Lake?
A couple of quick items. One, I'd like to stress that there has not been an ordinance codified since 2021. The township had listed 36 new laws, till I pointed out that one was listed twice this past week. Now we're down to 36. So we have 36 changes that aren't codified into the overall document, making it very confusing as to what's in effect and what is not in effect. And I would submit that unless there is an urgent and time-sensitive need for an ordinance to be added at this point, that it's inappropriate to do so until Silver Spring has put its house in order with respect to what's been passed over the last three years. Second, the issue behind this, and let's get real, is one property. One property that attracted a lot of attention. One property that was rezoned in 2022. It was that action that created the objectionable situation for the organized opposition. And that is the real driver for what's being asked for now as some lessening of, of, of the evil, but it doesn't in, in fact affect that, because it is in litigation. Don Yarlet's put a hell of a lot of effort into lobbying this board, starting back in 2017, specific individuals to get that I two. Those who are now, all of a sudden, having a come to Jesus moment about gee, we shouldn't have done that, are now trying to appear as if they are the saviors in introducing this ordinance. And finally, when I look at the codified ordinances and specifically Section 41526C, under an I two, warehouse is already listed under conditional use. What am I missing?
Mr. Lake, is you, are you, have you finished your, your comments?
I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, I can address that, that question. As, as Mr. Lake said, the codification has not been completed. It's a very expensive undertaking, and staff is working to make that, have that completed as, as cost effective as possible. I think still, still on target to have that happen this, this year. The, the codification that Mr. Lake's looking at under that section is prior to the 2022 amendments. So the, the zoning ordinance that's operable and the, the amendments to it are all under the new laws currently. The township does have a consolidated, updated ordinance on, on the website. Little tricky to find, but you can navigate your way there.
I think it's a prime example of the confusion not being codified. It's, it's a prime example.
Yeah, and, and codification is just simply an organization of ordinances. Doesn't make the ordinances that were passed any, any less effective, that they, they were not codified yet. So they're still effective ordinances. It is, it is a little confused, confusing, especially for the layperson. When you go to law school, you learn to look for the new laws sections in, in, in the books. Back when I was in law school, we didn't use Westlaw and Lexis quite as, quite as much. But you still look for that in, in online research. But I agree for the, for the, especially for the layperson. Trying to, trying to figure out that patchwork of ordinances can be, can be challenging. Some, some attorneys have trouble with it.
When I worked for the state, my favorite Secretary of Agriculture was adamant that we do not use acronyms. We spell everything out and we make a proposed statute change fit preferably in one paragraph and no more than one page. And that it be easily read and understood by the lay public. One of the attorneys objected, and he stopped that attorney and informed him that it wasn't as though he was a real attorney, he was a state attorney. I thought that was beautiful. And at this point, anybody in this township should be absolutely disgusted with this situation that makes it necessary to have, in your words, gone to law school to understand the laws that apply to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lake. Scott, anybody else online? Denise?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Again?
All right, first, I just want to say publicly, thank you to Mark Potiger for all you have done to help this community and stop the warehouse and all the money you've spent. I don't think that you've gotten the appreciation you should have for that. Secondly, there's a lot of confusion when it comes to the rezoning of the Yarlet's property. And when I look at what was said by Supervisor Lenker, he was alluding to staff making recommendations with that. And I was finding some interesting information with the comprehensive plan that was approved in December of 2019. Can somebody please say, how did that happen? And why was the, why were warehouses changed to permitted by right? I, there's so much confusion out there, and that's, I'm just curious. I, I want to, you know.
Can I ask what comment I made that alluded to that?
Yes, you had said, look back at the transcript. You had said, when staff makes those recommendations and, and those decisions, and then you kind of did a word salad, avoiding it. And then later you said, I think staff's great at the next meeting, but it's in the transcript. And, and by the way, no one on the board had voted no for the rezone, so I just putting that out there.
Yeah, I'm not sure what comment you're talking about. I'll have to check into that, so I won't comment. I don't, I was not alluding to anything with staff, if you're, if that's what you're thinking.
You did say staff, but, I mean, I have the recording of it. But can another supervisor maybe clarify what happened there?
Before that, before that happens, Ms. Baylor, because there's a limitation on, on time for public comment, is, is that all you're looking for at this stage, or do you have other comments to, to make?
No, that's, that's all I'm looking for, just because there's confusion and I'm trying to understand.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody want to comment? Not sure I can rattle off the timeline exactly here, without looking a little bit closer at how that, all those meetings that transpired, but if any other board member wants to comment.
Well, that was during COVID. There was multitude of meetings when the, they had a comp plan and there was actually subcommittee or whatever on that. So like, it's hard to say. I'm, I'm lost.
Okay. Scott, any, any other comment online? Okay, any, any final comment in person? I'll give Clarence the final, the final 30 seconds here, as long as everyone's already been heard.
Clarence Boucher, 15 Warwick Circle. Two follow-ups and things that came up, and then something that, that came to me. One, as far as the consolidation, for three years, I've been asking to get a consolidated E code 360, and we haven't. And it makes me wonder, why do we use it if it's so expensive and so difficult to do, rather than just consolidate things in Word, put it out in a PDF in a library somewhere and, and look for it that way? I have had professionals, legal and real estate, that I've worked with, who've gone through the E codes, pulled out things, and had to correct them that that isn't where you go in this township. So it's just embarrassing at this point, three years after the factory passed the zoning ordinance, it's still not in E codes as an E code, but you got to go into some annex on there that maybe you know about, maybe you don't.
Clarence, I'll add, it's, we agree, and it's, it's a true example of a vendor lock. We can't touch it, right? You got to come to us and you got to pay us.
Then, then drop it.
Yeah, exactly.
Then drop it.
And find a better solution. I'm with you.
The second, on the, all this being done for one property, even if that was true, we should do it for one property, because that is the way this township works. It reacts, and we're reacting. I'd rather we didn't react, but if that's your policy, so be it. However, as I've said before, there are other times, there are going to be other ways that developers are going to find to bring a warehouse in. We don't know what they are, because if we knew what they are, we'd head them off. But they're going to do it, they've done it, and they're going to do it again. So we just need to put this tripwire in to stop it. Now, what I really wanted to say was that this is actually an opportunity for us. If we're going to change the zoning ordinance and we're going to add things as far as a condition for warehousing, then maybe we ought to be a little bit more, add a little bit more as far as things that we've thought about. For instance, put in a noise piece to this for warehouses. As we know, that is a huge problem. That always comes up when we talk about warehouses, that they're too noisy. So let's put in some noise levels in the form of decibels, which is measurable. Same thing with light, that's measurable. Access to highways, we already have some of that, but let's just make that a full-up condition. Access to highways, we already have some of that, but let's just make that a full up condition. That way, it's something you can look at when this comes up with a warehouse, and we know there's going to be more warehouses coming in. So I asked that maybe we we think about this some more. And not just transfer things from one section to another, but add some things that we know we've been talking about all along. And if need be, I can work with the staff, because I've been thinking about this for the past four years. Thank you.
Thanks, Clarence. Okay, final call for a comment? Okay, with that, I would announce the closure of the hearing, and I'll look to the board for any comments, questions, and potentially a motion.
I feel like I'm following Clarence.
Okay, we're we're gonna try to close out, but go ahead.
Sorry. Just want to say in ending it. We need to control the narrative. Narrative being our ordinances, our zoning. And then we can take a step back. Somebody comes in, we have it down. We know what our narrative is. Nobody else outside should be controlling our narrative. Or saying, I want this done or that done. Unless you look at everything that you've decided upon, agreed to. And then you listen. But you have your narrative. But we don't revisit it every time somebody comes down. Example, solar panels that were discussed tonight. Commercial solar panels. Yes, help with the electricity, but they generate a tremendous amount of heat. Heat that can affect nearby properties, nearby homes. Unless it is used efficiently and recirculated to heat the warehouse. Or the structure that it's heating, and I'm talking commercial, not against a residential property. So if we know that somebody is coming for solar panels on a commercial building. We want to make sure that we're not only allowing the solar panels or not allowing them. But we don't want the heat generated also. Because then it doesn't become effective for anybody. But we have the narrative to control.
Thank you. Okay, with that, the hearing is now closed. I'll bring you back to the board for discussion and a motion. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh three of the Township of Silver Spring Township. Silver Spring, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, amending section two fifteen of the Silver Spring Township. Zoning ordinance of twenty twenty two as amended to be incorporated under chapter four one five zoning. Of the code of the Township of Silver Spring Township as amended to revise warehouses and wholesale trade. Establishments from permitted use by right to conditional uses as in the general industrial zone I two. With related amendments to regulatory conditions under articles three, general criteria, and four, specific criteria.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Dave second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone, for your input on that. We'll move on to unfinished business. We have a resolution. We've had a number of discussions on towing rules and guidelines. I'll turn it over to staff for an update.
So you have before you the resolution largely what what you had previous month. Before we had further discussion with the the towing companies, Chief Robenstein and I met with companies. Took some of their their feedback, took additional feedback that we received from the board last month. And incorporated that into the resolution that you have for towing services that we've we've discussed previously. Do you do you want me to go over the the revisions? I know all the towing companies have the have have the updated resolution. But I I can go over them if if that's helpful. I'm sorry, I I thought the I I thought it did go out to the towing companies, the the resolution. Okay, okay, I I can go over it. I it can be provided to you, sure, yeah. Sure. The revisions from the last the last copy that you did have. Clarifies that the 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 rotation list applies to to light duty vehicles. I think that that both came up from the from the board and perhaps at our discussion with towing companies. It clarifies enforcement of zoning ordinances. Where a company would not be on the list if if their if their property. Is not in conformance with with local zoning ordinance. Unless, of course, a variance has been has been granted. Additionally, looking for the substantive changes. We did have some discussion on the flat fee. Supervisor Lenker in particular had had some some interest in that. The provision to allow a flat fee remains in there. I did let the board know that at the discussion with towing companies, there there wasn't a. A strong notion in favor of having a a flat fee across across the board. Finally, the the largest part of the 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 changes from the last resolution came from the discussion with towing companies. Where there was a concern that it was heavy handed with the 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 violations and penalties. That it was a strict removal from the list for suspension from the list for a year if there was a violation. It now would require prior to a one year suspension from the list. That the towing company have thirty days to cure any violation that's curable under under the resolution. And that there be a written warning for anything that's a something that's not curable. So you have an employee who's who who doesn't conform to the to the regulations, you get a warning for that. That's not something that's necessarily curable. They do something wrong on site that's in violation of the resolution. That's just a warning and not not a direct suspension for violation until a subsequent subsequent violation of that that provision. And then finally, just clarifying that any any appeals of of any violations would be would have to be in in writing. To to the township within thirty days of the the notice of a violation. Summary of the changes, it's again up to the board whether to proceed at this at this stage, need more time to digest it. I'm understanding now that the companies maybe didn't receive a copy of the the resolutions. So if if there's a desire to take more time, of course, you can table it or discuss it and and give additional feedback. Or move forward this evening.
My my suggestion would be that we table it because I think the towing companies should have a copy of the actual revisions that were made. And that's my suggestion.
Sean, I will add that. I want to set fee. If they can't come up with one, then we, the township or the board, come up with one. If they don't want to tow, then I'm sure we'll find someone. Because I think this is just going to open the door for the the games that went on before with gate fees. You call, there's a fee. There there was all these fees tacked on to these bills. It was ridiculous. Those days are done. If they can't come up with a fee, then the township will come up with a a set tow fee for basic tow. I I'm just being honest. If if you guys can't do it, we'll do it. Because it was ruined. This all came about because of people overcharging and playing games. I'm just going to be honest. So that's why we were forced into this. If you guys can't come up with something. Then we'll we'll do it. So if you guys can't sit down and come up with a a set fee that's probably in the middle and something fair. Then, you know, like, I'm I'm going to ask that either staff or the board, we come up with something. Spent a lot of my valuable time doing this because people chose to play games with insurance companies and individuals. So, I mean, it's upsetting to me that this goes on and it gave the township a black eye. As far as certain people thinking that, you know, either our personnel was involved or we were condoning it. So I think between that and making sure that everybody can be in compliance, I have no trouble tabling. But I would like to see a set fee that comes to the board. And also, I would like to see if there's a violation, that there's a file kept. And we have a set number of violations that can be kept on file a set amount of time. And it results in them being off the list to ensure that we don't have any more games going on.
Okay, any other comment from the board? I think we're moving towards tabling. If there's any other opinion, let it be known. Yeah, and yeah, you want to provide input, come on.
Hi, I'm Barb Miller. My husband is Miller Sands Towing. You're seeing a set fee. What all does that include? Our storage? Does that include impounds? It needs to be a little specific, so one of us isn't adding one thing, sorry, one thing and not something else.
I I think maybe the the chief can maybe average like daily storage charge. That everybody has the same fee. I think there's going to be a difference if there's an impound, because that has to be in a secured.
Right.
Locked in area. But I'm talking about if you get called to a wreck.
Right.
And.
So you're including the like, for example, and I'm only going to use salmonized price. You're including the four seventy five that we charge. Sometimes we charge debris removal of five dollars because the fire company cleans everything up. But we have to pay for the trash to be disposed. So does that include like the wrap, the the cleanup, the tow, the wenching? The storage, the second tow? Everything, the gate fee, which we don't do that, but. The after hours.
What 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 I'm looking at, yeah, yeah, and and everybody's here so they hear the same thing. Like, if they get called, if the police call you out for an accident. Like, if you you would have to wrap a car, if there's debris cleanup, the basic tow. Now, if something's down over an embankment or something, and yeah, yeah, that's outside this realm. This is for showing up and say there's a at the intersection of one fourteen and eleven, there's two cars. Somebody gets dispatched out, they have to hook the cars up, they're they're great accessible. You you tow them and you go. These gate fees, these administrative fees, like I'm seeing bills with all these fees tacked, the one that. Like, all that has to be in to the basic tow. Now, if there's something over a hill, that's not what we're talking about. This is for a standard tow where you go out to an accident and there's nothing above and beyond. But but it shouldn't be inclusive of cleanup. And it should be inclusive if you have to wrap it because of the towing. That's what we're talking about. But like with storage, there should be a set fee for everybody for for the basic outside storage. That way, somebody, the concern I have is if you have somebody that, say, lives down in Gettysburg, they come up here shopping, they get in an accident. They use tow company A, and they get a nine hundred dollar tow bill or a thousand dollar tow bill. And tow company B takes somebody local and it's four hundred dollars. And then for whatever reason, they find that out, it does not look good, especially if they're outside the area that there's. The something that that's not going. I would rather have it a set fee. And then plus, the chief knows what it is for the basic tow. It makes it easier for him. But like these days of people hitting the insurance companies hard, we all pay that at the end of the day.
Oh, yeah.
You know, holding cars because you say you're not around, whatever it is. If they make a phone call that day and say they're coming, whatever day they say they come, if if you're not available for whatever reason. That's the day that the storage charges stop. So like. We're not talking like if somebody wants to come at one in the morning for their car, we're talking basic. You come to an accident tow, that that's a set fee. And the basic services that are tied in with that, so.
Okay, so that wouldn't be like, for example. Wenching is like what HJ does? Or CMV.
Yeah, that's outside.
Over.
Yeah, that's outside.
That's not, there's a car sitting right there, like on a car out like in one fourteen.
Yeah.
And you're literally using your wench to wench the vehicle.
Yeah.
That's not one.
Yeah, there's no wrench fee, but like if one of these guys had whoever's involved in it has to come out because a car's over a hill. And they got to bring multiple piece out that no, we have no problem with that because we understand. But like, if you're coming out and the car's sitting along the edge of the road and you start tacking ones, five, six, seven extra charges. And it turns into two or three thousand dollar tow bill or, you know, fifteen hundred dollar, I I think that's being ridiculous.
Right.
So.
But we would still be allowed like, I know there's times where like Jake will come out because he'll help us. So that Heidi will send me an invoice that gets put on my invoice. As soon as I get that email, that check is literally written, and my husband's taking that to the mailbox or to the post office. So that's going to make our invoice look different than. But there's also where you write remarks. So you I specify on our invoice, you know, like I'll put a number one down beside extra helper rotator. And then up in the remarks, one.
You itemize it and like I I've made this, the chief and I talked to one day. I would recommend people take pictures. If you have a car that involves extra work, that you have it, especially if the people. Would file like a complaint with the chief. And like I said, this never would have came, we would never have been here. But we've gotten tons of or I personally have gotten multiple complaints. And it was every like couple of months, and it was insurance companies, it was turned over to the chief. It never ceased. People kept on it. So, you know, like, it makes us look bad. So this is where we're at now. So if people decide they don't want to do it, that's fine. If we have two or three that say they want to do it, then that's where it's going to be. But I I think at the end of the day, we got to be fair to the residents and the people that come here to do commerce or shop or just travel through. That they're not going to get taken advantage of.
Okay, and I, sorry, I also know like if we get lockouts. For senior citizens, children, animals, we don't charge. Is that going to be held against us for a call then?
Didn't I talk to you about that with chief with? Okay, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, anything from the board?
Chairman Mockimer, just to clarify, that's my error. I didn't realize I was to be sending out the red line copies. It has been sent out. Everybody, all five agencies should have gotten it on their email now, so that's my fault.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah.
Okay, we had a suggestion to table to allow a little bit more input or at least review of that latest copy and then.
And that also.
We have to figure out what we're doing with the set fee, right?
And that can also ensure everybody's in compliance, like with their buildings or whatever. That'll give people a chance to get things and make sure that they have all their ducks in a row, too. They know what the policy is.
And Solicitor Schultz, you you wrote it in such a way for the set fee to basically allow, it gave us some flexibility with that.
You you, right, you can do that by a subsequent resolution.
Okay.
There's a sixty day period once the this resolution is passed to to implement.
Okay.
And and that would allow, we could certainly do the fee resolution at the same time you would pass this resolution. But it also allows some additional time.
Okay.
For that, I I want to get a sense, not it doesn't either before or after you vote, when when you would want this brought back, whether next month or or wait a couple of months and then bring it back.
That Sean, we'll give them a chance, too, to all meet and come up with something that's, you know, in the. Middle or close to the median, and then, you know, can have all everything hashed out. I'd rather have them do it.
Okay, so maybe we'll wait for for June to give a little extra time. Does that make sense? I'm assuming you're about to table it, but okay.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to table.
Dave moved. Is there a second?
Again?
Laura, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries to table. Thank you. We'll move on to new business. We have hand in township yard waste agreement discussion.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so um, everyone on the board is aware that Cumberland County uh, ceased the uh, program last year. Um, there's been a lot of discussion and energy around how that program's going to look. Um, I think right now as a board, uh, there's a lot of there's a lot of undetermined questions right now with regards to the uh, with, with regards to the yard waste program. We are unfortunately, uh, what we're going to have to do in the first go around is we're going to have to have an external contractor do the first grind um, in the spring here. Tyler has actually worked hard to find someone to do that. I think what is going to have to happen here eventually is we're going to have to work out some more details with however an authority is or is not uh, put together. Um, right now Hampton Township has an interest to become that authority, but candidly, there's just a lot of questions yet to be answered. So um, until we get those answers that the board would be comfortable with, we're going to proceed forward with an external contractor right now uh, with regards to this first grind. And then we'll uh, more than happy to meet with Hampton and um, continue to have conversation with them. There's just a lot of moving parts and I, I know Dave is um, very uh, very up to date with the uh, I'll just call it the intimate details.
What's the cost for us to pay somebody to do that?
It's about twenty thousand dollars to do all of the, well, we actually don't know if we'll get all the material single grind. What we do know is we're going to go up to a certain threshold and it's going to stop at that point.
Is that split two or three ways?
Two. It should be split in half with Mechanicsburg Borough.
It, it will be split in half with Mechanicsburg Borough. I already talked to them about that.
All right, Nancy, if you weren't finished, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm, I don't, where does that take place?
Right on site at Mechanicsburg Borough. They have the compost site. Um, that's where everyone from Silver Spring and the Borough take all their yard waste and then it gets uh, then it gets mulched and then it's put in piles.
The county, there are other places that that takes place and other people that will be paying the twenty thousand dollars.
Well, it'll vary. It's an hourly rate.
Yep.
And it depends on who you get for a contractor right now. If we go back to the county, it's probably, or the county equipment that's going to transfer will probably be half as much. But right now, we, we really don't have a choice because as long as the county has the equipment, they do not want anybody using it because of their liability insurance.
Yeah. So I, I think if I could just sum it up, um, of course, we're not only required, but we, we also know there's a need to have this for our township. We will continue to work with Hampton on trying to uh, get the specifics so that we as a township are comfortable with the use of the equipment, how that will work, et cetera. And I don't know whether that would be back in May or June. Um, I just would say they have known and we met with them in November of twenty-four. Uh, there was one meeting in the spring of this, or early winter this year. We haven't received that MOU yet. Um, but we're more than happy, not more than happy, we will meet with them. We just um, there's, there's just a lot of moving parts because there's a transfer of assets that's supposed to go to one municipality. Then that municipality is supposed to have a created authority. Then you would have an MOU with that authority. So there's just some moving parts that yet has not been resolved.
And, and the.
Is that fair, Dave, or?
Yeah. And the issue is Nancy, once the equipment is transferred from the county to them, there's a lot of leverage lost and there's a lot of people that still have questions. We, there was questions, I think every participant at that meeting had sent to them and I think we're waiting on them to revise the, the agreement or the principles behind the authority. So.
Dave, just to, just to hone in on what you just said, we did receive an email from Hampton stating that there is revisions to come. We have not seen those revisions yet. Um, and what's driving this topic tonight really is, is Hampton approached the county to get the equipment transferred to them prior to any type of agreement being in place with the other partners.
And my concern is, and I know, I think other people have, it's like buying a car, you don't buy the car, pick it up, drive it home and then find out what you're paying later. And you know, what, what's the payment and what's the interest rate? Like you get this all straightened out before things transfer, you know, the ownership transfers so that there's a little bit of leverage there and.
But, but it's not getting straightened out and meanwhile, we're paying for somebody else to do the work. We don't have any sense of when this is going to be ever.
But, but.
Make everybody happy.
The county has a deadline when this has to be.
And what is that?
Uh, June. So.
June, uh, next two months.
Yeah. But you have to understand, like even if we spend an extra ten thousand to grind this time, if this isn't a, a suitable agreement to the township, we could spend a lot more than that because this equipment to replace is going to be well over a million dollars. And they, the county had given back all the money out of the capital fund to municipalities. Well, a lot of them elected not to be part of this agreement. So there's, there's a deficit there and if we, it's, I'm not writing a blank check for, you know, like.
But what can we do to make this happen by June? What can we do?
The county's working, the county's working on that right now.
It's just two parts, right? So the county's working with Hampton on how they want to do that. And then Hampton wants to revitalize the MOU from November to find out what those details are that we've asked them to.
They, they have agreed to, to address the MOU.
Uh, well, they, they've agreed to send us a revised MOU. We just don't know what the MOU looks like.
Yeah, that's the problem.
So.
Yeah.
We'll get that. Maybe we can have a meeting with them and/or the other townships.
That is correct.
Yeah.
I, I, I think we'll probably in June have, if not before June, an MOU that I believe the board would be comfortable signing.
And, and, and the thing is that the MOU could be, this is for six months and we don't like it. We move on to MOU two, right? I mean, is that?
It could, it could be Nancy, but I think what we're going to strive is all the uh, to hit all the points that make sense for Silver Spring. Um, the reality is, is that we're at an undersized site as it is. And that's why we're working hard to get this other site up and running. But until then, we've got to grind it and we can, we can get there. It just, we just have to make sure it's right for us. We can get there.
Yeah, the long-term ramifications are a lot greater than the short term or I would not be for.
I, I get that. It's just that we've talked about it and talked about it and talked about it and we're not any further ahead than we were.
They have an attorney, Hampton had an attorney that was to craft this to uh, have a draft for the prospective municipalities that were electing to be in it. And that's what I think they're waiting on.
Yeah. So to, tomorrow, I'm going to end up drafting a quick email to Kirk Stoner over at the county. Confirm what we have already talked about tonight and that is we're interested in a program. And he is going to help work coordinate to get the county to move a little bit faster here to kind of get that process going on their part. And in the meantime, we'll have a parallel process where we're talking to Hampton. What does that program look like? And we'll bring that MOU back to you, the board, and see if those parameters, which is, we're going to make sure they work for us, works for you, the board, and we'll move forward.
And I feel better knowing Kirk, Kirk Stoner is going to be involved. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, Kirk in his department. Yep. All right.
Yeah, they're kind of in the middle right now because they were told as we were at the meeting in Feb, the end of February, that there would be a um, revision sent to each municipality that was planning on partaking in this authority within a few weeks and it's been two months.
Yeah, it's actually, it's almost been five months. I mean, it'll be five months come this May.
Yeah, but the.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, it was the.
It was five months, but nothing changed and we had the other meeting and people expressed concern.
Yep. And, and we waited for the MOU. They don't have it, but I think there's a lot of people have our eyes on it now. Not on our part, by the way. Other people who know the importance of how we have to get there.
So more to come. We'll look for.
More to come.
Look for an update next month perhaps?
Yep. We'll get an update and we'll uh, hopefully we'll have at least a draft or something by May or at the latest June.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on from that topic if everyone's okay.
Yes.
Stormwater permit, process discussion.
Sure. So uh, I'll take this and I'll give you some background before I get to the meat of the discussion. Um, so in twenty twenty-one, staff and I worked on an updated stormwater ordinance. The reason for that was um, DEP required any MS four municipality, which Silver Spring is, um, to update its ordinances by twenty twenty-two to comply with certain regulations. Um, so DEP put out what they call is a model ordinance listing what those regulations are and they're the bare minimum that every municipality needs to meet. There's also a second um, set of regulations though, that the, the township needs to utilize when crafting its stormwater ordinances. And that's called um, Act one sixty-seven planning. That's done by counties. So that Cumberland County also has a model ordinance listing their regulations that we need to follow as well. So what we have to do when we craft stormwater ordinance locally is take the bare minimum from the county ordinance, the bare minimum from the DEP ordinance and kind of mush them together and make sure whatever is in there is um, above either of those regulations. I tell you this story because um, that's what our twenty-two ordinance is based off of. It's based off of county and DEP requirements. There's very little, there are maybe one or two things, but um, very little in that ordinance that isn't required by them. We kind of did the bare minimum that we needed to as well. With that said, one of the things that DEP and the county require is the, the, that impervious impacts. Um, whether it's in a large development or on a standalone parcel, have to be counted as cumulative. So um, a good example is in twenty seventeen, Traditions of America, I was actually the township zoning officer at that time. Designed every lot to accommodate three thousand square feet of impervious. Now it's condominium type association from my understanding, so describing them as lots isn't a hundred percent accurate, but it still provides the example. So um, by building multiple lots at three thousand square feet each, they had to design their storm sewers and their basins to accommodate the runoff that would come from all of that. The problem becomes then when people begin to add on to their lots. Let's say there's a hundred homes and they all add a five hundred or a thousand square foot garage. Then they're adding runoff to their storm sewer and uh, storm water basin system that it wasn't designed to handle. And DEP's ordinances and the county's ordinances have regulations for how to count those impacts and when permits are and aren't required. I'm bringing this all up because the um, staff has asked me a few questions in the last few months on how to classify certain permits that are coming in and when to draw the line on when an improvement needs a permit and when it doesn't. Um, and it turns out staff has been utilizing a process that actually we, we suspect dates back to the nineties. So I don't think anyone on staff is individually responsible for why we're, are, why we are where we are. It's a, a process that has been taught for many decades. Um, but that process didn't really comply with the way DEP and the county says we need to count our impacts as cumulative. So um, once we've gone through everything with staff and reviewed it, it turns out that there's going to be a lot of projects that previously were not getting stormwater permits that will need to. And this isn't something I wrote. I just want to clarify. I'm not saying everyone, I, I like the idea of everyone having to get stormwater permits for certain things. Just saying DEP and the county are requiring this and we have to make sure our processes match that. Um, so now that I've cleared it up with staff, there will probably be many more stormwater permits required in the future for projects that previously didn't. So that's, that's the meat of the update. That's the generic update. I wanted to make sure both the public and the supervisors knew so that everyone was aware, especially if you guys get calls from residents. Again, not saying it's right, not saying it's wrong, not taking a stance on it other than saying what the ordinances are or what the DEP and the county require ordinance to say.
So Aaron, an example, if you could, that five hundred square foot garage.
Yeah.
Would typically not trigger a stormwater permit. Moving forward, it would.
Moving forward, it would. Yeah. In most of these developments like TOA, et cetera. Yeah.
And they would have to then ca, do the calculations from, from the original plans, stormwater controls?
They wouldn't have to necessarily do all that luckily. What, what they would have to do is make sure their, their additional impervious, five hundred square feet, a thousand square feet, whatever it is, doesn't cause an increase in the volume coming off of their property of, of runoff nor the rate, which essentially the speed of the runoff coming off their property. As long as they can prove that after they build the garage, neither of those two things go up, they'll be fine.
If they do go up, they're.
Then they'd be out of compliance and the permit would either be denied or they'd be provided an opportunity to revise it and resubmit.
Or install some type of control to.
Yeah. So they, ultimately they, most of these properties that fall into this area that weren't requiring permits, but now will, most of them will require like an infiltration pit or a rain garden, something like that.
And that's going to require engineering?
Yes. And that's the unfortunate part. It's, it's going to make building on these lots much more expensive. Um, again, not saying that's right or wrong. It's unfortunately just the, the matter of, of fact that we have to deal with from these regulations. Go ahead, Dave.
An instance where you demolish a building, say it's three thousand square feet.
Sure.
You have the one year to rebuild.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's still going to be the grandfathered, you know.
Yeah. So.
Wouldn't have to do this.
In general, I will say, yes, they wouldn't have to do this. Now their grandfathering gets really weird in Cumberland County because there's certain thresholds for, but in general, you are correct. If you demolish a house and kind of rebuild it in the same spot, in general, you wouldn't need to do all of this stuff.
What do you mean by same spot? The exact location?
Yeah. So the problem that as DEP and the county have it listed, if, if for example, your house is kind of, or your, your home is on a hill and you have it on one side of the hill, you were previously putting runoff in that direction, not say you rebuild it on the other side of the hill. Well, now you're putting runoff in a completely different direction that that neighbor may not have been receiving. That probably would need a permit.
But if you're doing something to help the cause, then you can show that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the other question would be, does this pertain to any sort of earth moving or is it strictly? Say for instance, somebody has to replace a water line and the only reason I say this.
Yeah.
There is a community and this goes back ten, fifteen years, they required an E and S plan to do a utility trench, which I think is ridiculous.
Yeah. So um, there are limits for um, impervious areas, which is mostly what I'm talking about now. But there are limits as well for disturbance. Anything under five thousand square feet would not require an E and S plan from at least the township perspective um, that requires permitting. And once it crosses five thousand square feet of disturbance, and this is from the county, not from us, we have to get a stormwater permit.
That's not going to change. This is just strictly new like patios, sheds, new garages.
Yeah, exactly right.
Okay. All right.
Aaron, would, if the original, are we, are we okay there, Dave? Sorry.
No, no, no. I just bought it.
Um, if the original stormwater controls were developed to a maximum impervious, would that still trigger?
No. So that's a really good question. Um, so I'll give you some more details on that one. There are two ways that engineers generally design these, uh, because this relates to residential developments. I'm going to stick to that instead of like warehouses and stuff. They generally design residential developments to two standards. One is they know what a house, a standard house from that builder is going to be. So I'm going to use Keystone Custom Homes just because they're a big name. They have nothing to do with what I'm talking about in specific. It's just a generic example. Keystone Custom Homes, they have a three thousand square foot home and they know in general, they install a five hundred square foot driveway. So the engineer will design everything for three thousand five hundred square feet. That essentially means then in that development, anyone who goes above three thousand five hundred will need to get a stormwater permit to prevent the storm sewers and basins from being overwhelmed. But the, another way that engineers can do it um, is that they could also then just design their storm sewers and basins for the maximum impervious allowed on those lots. We have in, in Silver Spring Township, we have developments that have done it both ways. As our ordinances are currently written, um, engineers and developers have the choice between those two options. So if, if that development, Ridge Hill Road is one of them, um, and I think that's being currently developed by Ryan Homes. Um, they did design all their lots to maximum impervious coverage. So if the lot allows a maximum impervious of five thousand square feet, everything was designed for that. So if they build a three thousand square foot home and driveway, those people could build two thousand square feet of garages, patios, pools, whatever, and not need a stormwater permit. So um, I've been working.
There's still a cost passed on, but it's more easily absorbed.
Correct, because it's up front.
In the broader picture.
Exactly. Because essentially all the costs that went to develop that storm sewer system, the basins, whatever, are then in the agreement of sale. Basically that lot costs more to buy in the first place. Um, so to, to note too, and again, not defending, not attacking these regulations, I can say in twenty twenty-eight, uh, DEP will now require us to update our ordinance yet again. Um, and to your point, Carl, one thing, and this is actually something I proposed in twenty. And to your point, Carl, one thing, and this is actually something I proposed in 2021, but I was told not to do it because it was too strict for residential developers. And, and the next question is, who told you that? Honestly, at this point, I don't know. It was four years ago. But I wanted to put in the ordinance, consider that any residential development of, you know, five lots or more, something like that, should design everything to the max impervious possible to avoid this issue from happening. DEP is actually now gonna require that in 2028 moving forward. So our ordinance will have to be updated, and so any other developments after this will hopefully avoid this issue.
After 28?
After 28.
Do it sooner.
Yeah, unless, yes, correct. We could add it in sooner.
Aaron, the, the other thing, I had a property owner that were building a house on the north side of the township out of they brought up, they had like almost a hundred grand into their
Financial security?
No, um, I would call it stormwater detention, driveway in the house.
Sure.
We're just gonna end because it's gonna get to the point, people, the common person's not gonna be able to afford to build.
So I, I've been telling you, I'm not attacking or defending the regulations. I'm gonna stick my neck out here on, on this one. At least when it comes to standalone lots, there's probably a different case to be made for a big development, building acres and acres of impervious. But for standalone lots, the regulations are getting so strict that, you're right, Dave, it's gonna be really hard. And again, this is DEP and the county. This is not you guys. This is not us. This is not Silver Spring Township. These regulations are getting so strict, it's gonna be really hard for an individual family to build a house. It's, it's getting very, very difficult.
Is DEP auditing this stuff?
I, I honestly, I, I don't know. So the, the model ordinance that's coming out in 28, I actually do know the regulators that wrote it, so I could always ask questions, and we did provide a lot of
I don't think you should. They might come knocking.
I know, right? Yeah, it's one of those things like, yeah, don't, don't call the IRS.
You look for trouble, you'll find it.
Yeah, yeah.
Audit it?
Yeah, I know. So, no, no one, no one is auditing this quote unquote, but the 2028 ordinance at least, which will, if you, this is to the public, if you wanna do something to your house or build whatever, do it now. It's gonna get even harder in 2028. They did provide that, they did advertise it for public comment a few months ago, and both HRG and, I think there were 70 total submissions, provided comment on both this ordinance and the MS4 permit that accompanies the ordinance, because there are some good things in there that actually make it simpler in the future for us as an MS4 municipality, but there are also some things that make it excessively strict. So hopefully they tamper those things back, but regardless, there, there is no formal audit process beyond that.
Okay. What would be in, so it wouldn't be a major change to, to change? You, you said right now we have an either or. We would just strike the either and leave
So, so when I say we have an either or, the ordinance is just silent on the issue, so developers can really just design it how they want it. If we wanted to implement something like this to prevent it in the future, we would just add, it's, I think it's like two or three sentences. I still have it, actually, what my language was, but it's very similar to what DEP is gonna provide in 2028. So honestly, I'd probably just steal DEP's language. It's like three sentences, and we can just throw it into the stormwater ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, it would save any developments in the next three years at least.
Yeah.
Facing that. I don't know how many that'll be. It may not be a lot.
Yeah, and the, the thing too is, what we've noticed is these large residential developments of 20, 50, 100 lots are, are really slowing down because of the way Silver Spring is zoned. There, there isn't much room for those. What we're seeing a lot of lately is like five to 15 lot developments. So this still would impact those, because there's still smaller plots of land that, that allow for that.
Okay. I'd, I'd be interested in considering that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think it would alleviate that surprise for homeowners
Yeah.
Down the road, so.
Is this part of the MS4 permit?
It is.
So we have no choice, really?
Yeah, correct.
I mean, people keep telling me they feel like they're getting dogged out with this.
I'll, I'll be honest with you. I, I think they are. I just, I just built some additions on my house, and I had to do the same thing, and it's, it, it's excessively expensive for your average family to, to live and pull these things off. And so I get it. I mean, when people complain about it, I get where they're coming from. It's, it's crazy.
Do you know good engineer that you could find to do all that?
I, I know a few, but the, but because of conflict of interest, I don't think we're, we're allowed to help. But yeah, so I just wanted to make sure I provided the board and the public an update, because it's a mixed bag. I know, especially when it comes to large residential developments, many would see stricter regulations and more permitting. It's a good thing if, if you're a downstream property owner. The property owners within that development might see it as a bad thing. Either way, I wanted to make sure the public and the board was aware.
Shouldn't that be in the newsletter?
It, it could be. It's up to you guys and, and
I mean, I don't know.
Staff. I'll, I'll leave that to you guys.
It, it could be in the, in the newsletter. I think what I, I think that's a great opportunity, and I would also say that we probably should come in May and at least let you see the draft of what that wording looks like, what it is today, and then what it would look like.
Maybe just the website, but I mean, I think people should know this isn't just us against them. This is not
And that's especially why we wanted to have this public discussion, so people understand where it's coming from. It's DEP and the county.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, we're good to close out that topic. We'll, we'll keep you on the floor.
Yeah, so Cost Road. Last, I updated you on this project. We think we can pull off the phased approach of the project. From an engineering perspective, I know we can. It's just a permitting perspective. We had a meeting with DEP today, and it actually got rescheduled to next week at the last minute. So I do not have an update for you since last month in May. I hopefully will.
Okay. Update is no update?
Updates no update.
Alright, thanks, Aaron.
That's it.
Alright, we'll move to supervisor and staff comments to close out. Scott on my left.
I don't, but Suba had a comment from earlier.
Is she online?
Yes.
Okay, Suba?
Let me get her on.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave. Leslie has been of late updating the descriptions, so if it helps the board, it's good. I will let her know on that.
Thank you for that, Suba.
Okay, and one more thing, Randy Duncan was asking about K9 and the asset sale. The K9 Fund's chief did address that. The sale of fixed asset is being put back to the fixed asset sale line. So it's being credited in the right account.
Perfect. Thank you, Suba.
You're welcome.
Alright, Wellena? Okay, who do we have? Glenn, staff? Alright, Amy? Victoria, you're not staff. I'm gonna skip by you. Cheryl? Bill? Chief? Solicitor Schultz? Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, just an update on the municipal campus. As you know, we have the MPDS permit that's been submitted by HRG. In record time, the administrative part of it was, was been moved on, which is great. It's now in the technical review. So actually, Cumberland County Conservation will actually be reviewing that permit, and once that's done, they'll pass it over to DEP for final. Everybody is aware that we're on a time crunch, and so we'll just say, we'll wait and see where that time comes to get, to get that permit.
Was the archaeological wind done yet?
Yes, so that, I actually wrote it right here. The archaeological was done, and we have that report. We're also taking a look at that report and having another archaeological group take a look at the narrative that was provided. And that we're gonna probably come to the board with a proposal with that narrative for the archaeological.
Good. Okay. Anything else, Ray?
That's it. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't, that was it.
Aaron, okay. We'll go to the board. Laura?
Nothing.
Nancy?
Nothing. Thank you all for coming and sitting through this. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Harry?
We always enjoy a good crowd. Thank you.
Dave?
Chief, if Nancy gets strangled, because she said to me before the meeting, this is gonna be a quick meeting.
I know.
You, there's no suspects. You didn't hear nothing. You didn't see nothing.
Because of you, it wasn't a short meeting. That led there's that, not right?
You didn't hear that. There's no motive here, chief. That's all I got. Yeah.
I'm gonna steer clear of that and just echo what's been said. I appreciate everyone's participation and joining us this evening. And with that, any objection to adjournment?
None.
So it will be. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Night, all.